I don't see any envelopes there. You want favors, come on now.
David Turner, candidate for county supervisor district two. I strongly suggest that you table the issue for two reasons. It's a duplication of effort. Almost everything in it is already in the code. You don't need an ordinance to cover a code that's already in effect. It adds unnecessary restrictions to the board, telling you what time you're, how long you're having a meeting and what time. I think that the chairman and the board members can set that as needed. I don't think it needs to be in the ordinance. We also have Robert's Rules of Order for, and it's a long and well-established means of conducting meetings. We don't need to add to, add to that. And I said before, it's a fine checklist. I think it's a great checklist for the new people and for existing folks, depending on who gets reelected. And I want to make sure that everybody understands, remember the Declaration of Independence we started out with? In life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness, liberty is affected here. Every law that is ever implemented infringes on someone's rights in some way, every law. So we need to reduce the laws that we have and not implement law that don't need to be implemented. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Al Saffo, I live in Deizer. And I had comments on the procedural rules for the Tama County Supervisor. First of all, the ordinance B fourteen should be just voted down by the current supervisor. Please do not require the new supervisors to follow these unnecessary rules. They're not needed, as David has just said. Follow what the code says, and we're doing it currently. We'll keep up doing what we're right now. We have a very good peaceful meeting. I feel that if you pass these rules, as presented, it will set Tama County back to a time when the public was not informed about the issue. And we had citizens that believed they were ignored by the county government. I don't want that to happen again. If you need to have rules, it's going to be redundant, but put only what's in the code, not what somebody's added to it. Also, having been here at three different meetings, there seems to be two stories told here. Before sharing, we were told that the insurance company attorneys that work for the insurance company and not the citizens of Tama County wrote the procedural rules for Tama County Supervisors and a copy would be sent to all counties and insurance risk pool. That did not happen. At the next meeting, we were told that the Tama County HR Director wrote the procedural rules with the approval of the insurance company attorneys that work for the insurance company and not the citizens of Tama County. But she did not get the opinion of the Tama County Attorney. So if you still want to pass the rules on this ordinance of B fourteen, I have emailed the supervisors with reasons for each issue of the rules of conduct, if you want to get details, which I don't have time to do that here, but just to prove that we just vote for Tama County.
Well, y'all know me, I have my paper. And I got something that I think is kind of relevant. Because like the last speaker, I was kind of confused about, you know, the order of events or whatever. And so, because I wasn't sure whether the Heartland Risk Pool was something that was going forward with these or not. And last week, Tammy said that we were kind of going to be the first county in Iowa with such an ordinance. You know, and I thought since we're sending a president and, you know, that the Heartland Risk Pool may follow suit next, I thought good to get kind of other people's opinion on it. So last Tuesday, I sent like thirty emails out to all the other supervisors in the nine counties. The other nine counties, only got one response. I don't know if that's just because I didn't give them enough time or what. So I thought I'd tell you now, and since, you know, paper doesn't publish till Friday. And, and I don't know if I'll get any more responses this week. But I sent the exact same email to everyone, except no changes, not even names or anything. And whatnot, I just told about, you know, what's been going on, sent a PDF of the ordinance. And then I asked three questions and the response I got was from Dale House, the chairman from the Van Buren County Board of Supervisors. And my first question was, have you heard of this ordinance? He said, no. So what are your thoughts on this ordinance specifically, the rules of conduct section? And he said, none. And he said, and then my third question was, are you currently considering this ordinance for your county? And he said, no. So I just want to throw that out there. I mean, I don't know, people always have extra copies and crap. So I've made a few extra copies. I didn't know some of you guys would want. If you do, I have them here. All right, all right. Just wanted to throw that out there.
Can I, can I add something to what he just said? I went last week and made a comment on the budget in Benton County. And while I was there, I asked Benton County if they had received it, and they have not received this either. I'm pretty sure that this did not get sent out by, to the, to the people that was in the insurance risk pool.
Jan Wilson, I conclude here. I had actually listed all of the things that Al had questions on the narrative of this. And I guess my final question to you guys is, does that make any difference to you? That misleading statements are said, the next week something else is said. Does that make any difference in how you're going to vote on this ordinance? Because you were, they were all going to be, it was specifically asked if all of the counties would be studying this at the same time. And I think you said, well, we might talk to them and get some input on it. That was absolutely not true. So then last week, it's like, well, we'll be the first and then others may look at it. The public is being misled. Does, does that make any difference to the board supervisors on this issue or any others? Should, should the information the public gets be truthful, not misleading, not misrepresented? Does that make a difference? Must be a no comment from everyone. Thank you.
Somebody that's going to ask me, I was the no comment guy behind it, Larry. And they don't make, I said, really? Me?
Oh, well, make, okay, you had one no comment, thank you.
Richard Arby.
What they didn't say, they...
Well, he did.
Last week, Dan, you said you were going to a Heartland Risk Pool meeting.
That's right.
What did you find out concerning this ordinance?
It hasn't, the meeting's asleep.
So you're going to possibly vote on this before you find out if it even got sent out to the other counties?
We'll, we'll discuss that when, when folks are finished with their comments.
Okay. Reason I was a little late coming in here, excuse me, Andrea Devore called me. She said she texted Kurt yesterday and she wants him to read whatever she texted. Do you have that? I asked her if it was okay. I mean, because she said she had sent you a text. So would you please read that?
Now?
That's part of my three minutes.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. Hurry up.
I better hurry up. Hi Kurt, Andrea Devore. I'd like to encourage you to vote no on the public speaking code. I agree with Heather that it would be a good idea to let someone else try to implement it first. Tammy point blank said all the other risk pools, all the other risk pool counties were speaking about it in, in that morning. And then, sorry, I had to just open it up one. Tammy point blank said all the other risk pool counties were speaking about it that morning, very morning. And then the next week said there, they didn't have, she, Jesus, I'm sorry. And then the next week, she's, I might have got some brain injury.
You want more glasses, Jerry?
Boy, yeah. Let's start with, Tammy point blank said all other risk pool counties were speaking about it that very morning. And then the next week said, no, they didn't, and she can't make them. Why are we getting both sides? I agree that it's been uncomfortable in the other counties and kind of a poop show. Kind of a poop show sometimes. As for Tammy saying they're getting themselves in trouble, I'd like to see proof of that. I would also like to have these codes in that she is referencing made available and exactly where she is finding them and where the wording is from. I just think it is getting pushed a little too quickly. Yes, previous meetings have been uncomfortable. Yeah, you'll get that when you deal with the public. What is, what, was it comfortably, comfortable when the county and the public that signed a petition were threatened with a lawsuit? It's not just a TCAP group. I've heard Bob O'Coon get pretty lippy in there. And in all honesty, was it okay for Tammy to tell Karen she was mean in a, as an employee to, on the clock? That could be considered bullying. I'm not saying she's right or wrong. I'm just saying she, should she have been removed? Could she have been removed under the new policy, question mark? Sorry for blowing your phone up, but just throwing some thoughts out there, good luck. I think she meant good luck reading this. I may go to the doctor for concussion. I didn't know I took that big hit last night.
Thank you Kurt.
Yes.
You know, I've heard from the other people that talked, you know, we're getting two different stories from Tammy. Which one, you know, is that why she's not here this morning, so she doesn't get the third story? And, you know, I have a huge problem, and I've said this before, with county employees that don't tell the truth. And so I, I just want you to say that. Vote no.
Hi Laura Wilson from Deizer, pardon my voice. I just had a few things to follow up on previous comments during the other, other public hearings. Well, this was pushed as an ordinance that was needed for start of term organizational purposes. I've been here for two of those first of the year meetings and I seem to remember the auditor having a document, either from the handbook or a policy, that detailed everything needed for those purposes, and it went smoothly every time. We also already have a public comment policy that you can choose to revise the time allowance on if you feel it needs to change. And also, when Kurt first took office, it was discussed if supervisor training would be included for his onboarding. So everyone should already be aware that the training exists and should be used. This type of information feels more like handbook type information as opposed to something needed in a county ordinance. Also, while the code states that any action item must be on the agenda, it does not say that only action items are allowed. The code states that meeting means a gathering in person or by electronic means, formal or informal, the majority of the members of a governmental body, where there is deliberation or action upon any matter within the scope of governmental bodies' policymaking duties. It goes on to talk about the ministerial versus social purposes. But deliberation is defined by Cambridge Dictionary as considering or discussing something. So in the code, it does include discussion along with action items as being available for being on the agenda. And then also, there already exists a document from the Iowa State Association of County Supervisors that compiled all of the information out of the Iowa code, references the code directly, just as Tammy tried to do in her ordinance, for everything out of the code that the supervisors would need to reference. And there's a nice table of contents. You can also do a word search or word find on PDF. And so not only is it redundant from the code, but it's redundant from your manual. And while the, the State Association of Supervisors believes that a manual is sufficient, I don't think we need to add another ordinance on top of that. And then everything in the code itself is also fairly easy to find with the internet. And locating keywords within the code is easy with the search find functions in PDFs. Tammy had made it sound like you need to take a course in library research and find the physical copy and go down to the state to find anything, where it's really easy to find. I mean, we've been finding it and bringing it up in all these meetings over the years. And also last week, she talked about the Iowa Public Information Board raising their fines if supervisors made mistakes so that this was more for your, yours and other supervisors' benefit to have this reference. Whereas with the manual and the code, we already have that reference. And adding it as an ordinance would just increase your fines if you did make a mistake. Because the ordinance makes it a county infraction, which would include misdemeanor charges in some cases. So I request that you dismiss and disregard, or discard this new ordinance completely and have the pertinent information for organizational purposes and new supervisors compiled into a handbook or a manual instead of having this ordinance. And the other code information is already compiled for you in quick reference with the manual for County Supervisors of Iowa, which is available online with references to the code. And I do not feel that this new ordinance is needed for our county. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, well, I'd like to, well, I just, sorry. I was just wondering, what, what are the county's requirements for the HR human resources to filling that job? The rent county requirement? The responsible, responsibilities of that position?
No, no, the... No, do they have to take a course, college, four-year degree, I don't know, two-year degree?
I don't think they, I don't believe they have to have a college education, but there's a lot of training, I believe.
I know you can get a degree in HR, that is an available degree to get, yes.
Okay, you can. I have no idea if Tammy adds a... So, yeah.
Thank you.
Did that answer? Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I would say that writing an ordinance is not part of the HR director's job. That's not going to be on her job description anyplace to do that. Has to do with key words and doing higher, what they're doing, doing right, doing all of that. Nothing in there but writing the ordinance for the county.
Okay. Well, learning some, I mean, learning some more stuff from you guys, obviously. And with the meeting coming up next week, I would like to, I'd like to at least table this. So Dan can go in the meeting and bring back some information. And for me, think some more about this deal. But that's my personal problem. But I'd like to get a motion to table it.
I, do we want to table or just action later, Laura?
Table, and that's the same as taking action later.
I'll make a motion to table it until Dan gets more information from the risk pool. I'll second that. I'll be home meeting on Thursday and I'll find out what the other counties are thinking. But really, we have to decide this on our own, this is, this is something we want to do. And I think everything that Tammy had written in the ordinance was, was based on codes. And I think the ordinance, if we have that, if we approve it, it'd be very helpful for new people, very helpful. You don't have to run through code books, you don't have to get a law, you'd have it. I think it would be a good thing. Anyways, I'll, that's my personal opinion. I'll go to the, I'll go to the Heartland Risk Pool meeting, find out what they have to say, find out their interest, and then we'll take it from there.
Okay, we have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. Okay, tabled.
Kurt, can I ask Dan a question? Depending upon what you hear at the risk pool meeting, will that change your opinion about implementing this county?
Well, I mean, we have to decide what's right for us. And I, I have to decide what I think would be good for us. And I think an ordinance like this would be good for us. You might not, you might not agree with me. But, but that's just my opinion.
I mean, I disagree with you.
Being a new, being a new person, it's like sitting on any of the boards, you know? You've got to sit there a year before you have a clue what you're really doing.
That's correct.
So I think it would be a good thing. But, but I'm going to go find out for the risk pool, what, what other counties, I...
You know, what are other counties doing? Have, have they received this at all?
Yes.
You know, because according to Tammy, it supposedly has been sent out.
Well, I don't, I, I don't know about Tammy. Did you get something from, didn't you get something from?
Lance?
Lance, from Haren County? Didn't you send him a, an email and didn't he reply back to you? Because I, I got something on my phone about that.
I, I sent it out to every supervisor in the nine counties, other nine counties. So I'm positive I sent him an email, but...
I could, I could find out though.
I'm checking now.
See if they got to say. But I really think bottom line is we have to, we have to decide our own, if this is what we want to have.
I, I did get something that said that he was adding BJ Hoffman to the thing, that's the chairman. And I believe that's, that's the right one. Yeah, Haren County. And when he said he was adding the BJ Hoffman to the thing because, if I'm reading it right and whatnot, because he was the chairman or the representative for the risk pool, I believe was the thing.
He was the chair of the risk pool.
Okay, well, yeah, then he added him to the email and whatnot. That was the only thing I got from Haren County.
Well, I'll find out. I'll get, I'll get some information, I'll report back to you next week.
I have one more comment I forgot to mention earlier, and it has to do with what Alan and Janet said. So Tammy had brought up that this was for the entire risk pool because other counties were having issues with their meetings and this wasn't for a specific county. My question would be, in that scenario, why would the risk pool have asked Tammy to write for Tama County to start a new ordinance if the other counties are the ones that need it more than us?
Does Tammy have to answer that?
Tammy would have to answer that. But also, if we're implementing a new ordinance, that should be something the supervisors that were elected by the constituents bring forth and decide, as opposed to getting it brought to you and, and saying, with the implication that we're going along with everyone else and then backpedaling to say we'd be the first. That's not something you guys came up with or thought we needed. So do you still think we need that if, if it wasn't something that was an issue before?
I think it's something that we need. I think the reason the meetings have gotten better is because we have, we've changed some of the rules. It used to be kind of free for all around here, a year and a half ago.
The only, the only rule I feel that we've changed is that we, we can't talk about stuff during public comment. We weren't doing free for all during the meeting. We were just talking about open, open topics during public comment time. And then your meeting continued civilly as usual.
I, I'll go back to that. I think the reason the meetings are more civil now is because we changed some of the ways we were doing business.
And then one final question. Do you really feel this needs to be an ordinance? Or do you just feel that this is pertinent information that could be a good checklist like Dave suggested? Does it need to be an ordinance that would cause county infractions if it was, if it was not followed?
I don't think it's, how can, how can you say it's going to cause county infractions?
In the code, when it talks about implementing ordinances, it makes it so that any disregard of that ordinance can be considered a county infraction, which could be up to a misdemeanor of a certain fine amount.
But the code, the code is basically what the ordinance says. So, and you...
Right, but it's, it's, it's an interpretation of the code in certain places. In some places, Tammy admitted herself, it is not the code. It is bringing in Robert's Rules of Order and other manuals and other policies into one ordinance. I mentioned in my last comments a couple of weeks ago that if we're going to bring the code out and make it into an ordinance, we should keep that separate from the ministerial portion as far as setting up the first of the year and the new supervisor training rules and stuff, and then keep the code stuff separate. This is everything pushed together and it's not all the code. It's an interpretation of certain parts, especially the part where she says that only action items can be on an agenda. I just read that part out of the, of the code for you. So it's an interpretation of certain sections of the code. And not every, everything in her ordinance is referenced to the code or referenced to where she got it from. So some portions are strictly from her interpretation and her point of view and not just code. So it, it's not just bringing the code out. It's bringing portions of the code and interpreting them in certain different ways that, that seem like they're meant to, blanking on a word. Yeah, contrary to the code or, or meant to implement something that, that doesn't need to be added right now, I guess.
You are, I think I'm on the same page as what the question, your first question was. So if we get these ordinances in there and we, that we don't do it right, then we're making us open to getting fined?
Right, so not only would you get fined by the Public Information Board for, for misusing the code, you would get additionally fined or could get additionally fined or sued for, for an infraction to the county ordinance. And that's not just for the public speaking part, that's for all the other, other supervisors parts too, as far as the conflict of interest. And I don't remember all the parts that were in there off the top of my head. But there were a lot of parts besides just saying, hey, we need to have training or, hey, we need to start with the splitting up of, of all the duties at the first of the year. There were other things in there that pertain to the supervisors and not just, not just the public comment that a lot of people touched on, that could open up the supervisors to additional fines besides the Public Information Board fines, if it's put into an ordinance. That is why, that is what the code states the ordinance purpose is, is to bring it out of the code so that you can imply county infractions on it, including misdemeanors and other fines. So if you don't have it as an ordinance, if you have it as a policy or a resolution or even a handbook, you would still have that reference to follow the code. You would still have the reference to, for new training and onboarding. But you would not open yourself up to, to possible legal action if, if you happen to be in, in contradiction to both the ordinance and the Iowa code then. So I still agree with them. I think it's more of a checklist, a handbook, a manual type item. And you already have the, the compilation of codes in the supervisor's manual from the state of Iowa, state of, state of Iowa County Supervisors Association. I, I, I still think this, this ordinance is redundant and not needed.
Yes?
So I'm wondering if this code applies to county employees as well as the public. And by this, I mean, on several occasions, there's been two people arguing over topics at the top of their lungs. And, you know, one's a county employee and the other's a public employee. Well, if they're both doing the same thing and you're gonna, are you going to escort out the county employee as well as the public servant? You see his hand? I mean, I think that's a good valid question. It should apply to county employees also. It should apply to county employees also.
And what happens if it's the two supervisors that are upset with each other?
Or you can't kick me out.
You want that?
So I was hoping Tammy would be her day, and so you, maybe you'll have to verify this with her. But she and I stayed after the meeting last Monday and talked, and Bob knows that we did. Thankfully, he decided he'd go home or somewhere.
Yeah, I had other stuff to do.
That's, I'm glad, Bob. So anyway, um, we talked about this group of people that is trying so hard to keep good stewardship, land stewardship in this county. To our, to the best of our ability and how much we care. We talked about how critical these times are right now. And that these rules may have been written hardcore just for the impending safe future of anyone attending any meetings. And at that, I believe, I believe that right now these are an overkill uh, as of May twenty twenty four, but they're offensive and threatening, and I said that to her, that that in, in this room of people, they aren't real appropriate. Even when we had a lot of people a year ago, a hundred people standing in this room, which you alluded to when it was out of control, but I mean, if you remember, it was like everybody standing room only, and this stuff wasn't back here. So, we talked about also the new influx of people coming into this county by the multitudes. And we see them every Monday going in and out of this building. And that these rules might be appli- applicable when in the future things get very, very dangerous, even at these, I mean, there's been no danger at these meetings, ever. Um, most of us hold our, our spot, whether we're standing or sitting. We're not crossing the room to get in anybody's face. But that doesn't mean that won't happen in the future. So, I would like to suggest that we, for the, I also suggested to, to Tammy that we bring a lot of information in here, every single, we don't even know, like right now, none of us know what we're gonna know a week from now. But we bring it in here, we, we're all deep news people, we talked about that. Um, we have a lot of sources of news, we bring it all in here. If we can't bring it in here, we can't say it, if it's not on the agenda, then you guys aren't gonna know it either, nor will the next five supervisors. However, in, in the future, we don't know what's gonna happen. We don't know who's gonna be in here, we don't know if it's gonna be safe even to be in here. So these rules could be implemented then as needed instead of now when they aren't. Right now, they could be a guideline, revised a little bit so they're not so threatening, but there's a lot of, there, there, a lot of poop coming down the pipe, there is. And, and it could be anytime, and we talked about everything that I just said right now. And I wish Tammy was here, and I'm sorry that she's not, so.
Tammy, you need to move on to that.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We had already voted on that.